Welcome to our monthly meeting. We're here to accomplish the business of school. For the sake of our students, we do want to hear from our citizens. There's time for public comment, for action items on the agenda. We ask speakers identify themselves in their home district. We also ask that they capture comments. Our focus is equity. Speakers, and to ensure meetings reasonable in length. If you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave time materials from the boards or through the moderator. We'll ask you to conclude your remarks as time elapses. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from your school board member or a school administrator. Thank you for your time.
Okay, so I have very special recognition tonight. As you may recall, at the last school board meeting, there I received a I got to pass that forward in a scholarship, in the form of a scholarship to a superintendent's choice student. And like, oh my gosh, well, I love them all, so how am I going to choose? So I immediately did speak to the profile of a graduate team and said, you know, I would love us to choose a student who's an outstanding student and might be a community college student or a vocational student who knows they want to do something but just isn't quite sure, but just needs that little extra step to go. And we found that student, and I'm so excited that he's here. So at this time, I would like to recognize Evan Hilton for receiving the Superintendent's Choice Scholarship of $1,000 to attend Lord Fairfax Community College this year.
Good for you.
He's trying to escape without a trigger. Congratulations, that's a lot to you. You're so proud. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Well, thank you, Dr. Grinsley.
Absolutely.
Really sweet. Very thoughtful. Is there a motion to adopt minutes from the July 14th and the July 15th school board meetings?
Some move.
We have a motion for Ms. Bynum. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Grove. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, Mr. Grove, did you have opportunity to review the bills?
I did, and everything looks to be in order.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, we have the payment of the bills and the homeschool report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No movement.
Much for Mr. Grove. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Rubin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And so ordered, Dr. Grinsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to invite Mandy Butler to please come up and speak to us about the annual food service bids that she can report on for the food service and nutrition program.
Good evening. All right, I just have a really quick update on our food service bid awards.
Squeeze it and lift.
Thank you.
I don't have that problem at all.
All right, so these will be our food service vendors for the upcoming school year. We have merchants for produce. We do Skank Foods and Local Food Hub for Pete Foods, Thornton River Orchard, Schmidt Baking for our bread products, Pet Dairy for milk, and Garber Ice Cream. And then we'll continue to proudly purchase from local farmers for micro purchases throughout the year. A new vendor we have this year for our software company, we switched to Meals Plus. They are a cloud-based provider. So with our grab and go cards, we could have an iPad, and we could be serving students that way. We could be at home and look up a free and reduce application. There's a lot of advantages of this system compared to our old one, and it's about half the price. So we are very excited for this switch. We actually have all of our staff training on it tomorrow. So we're going to cross-train everyone to be as versatile as possible for this year, so we're looking forward to it.
Good, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mandy. Okay, at this time, we'd like to give you an update about how our Family Futures Project, My Future Program, went this past year. So I would like to invite Ann Yeoman and Jenny Capsa to present on how that all went. That is the college savings program, remember that we started last year, where every kindergartner received $100 in a savings account with the opportunity to earn $100 more by meeting certain objectives. Ann?
It was an exciting semester. Sorry, it was an exciting semester. So as you recall, really, the goals of the project were two. One is that every child graduates with resources and knowledge and skills on a plan, 13 years from now, to be able to execute whatever their goals are. The second part was to provide information to parents that's reliable and accurate and so forth, and help them develop their skills. And between the two, the parents and the children, the household basically becoming more financially stable. So we had some challenges. So we have some great pictures. I don't think we want to start with pictures. Okay, so we have a tag team here. So just a couple of quick things. You have the highlights document. There is one thing I do need to update on that. As of the end of July, the students have $9,773 in their accounts.
Wow.
So about 42% of that is from the students' earnings. That is the activities that they participated in. Because of the semester being cut short onsite, only a couple of those activities got, where it actually took place in school. Enter Jenny, our heroine, who managed to, every week for the rest of the semester, send home some sort of relevant activity. She'll talk a little more about that, that the students could complete so that they could continue earning their incentives. So we had something like 32 students who completed all of their incentives, so they got their $200 total for the year, plus interest. And we had another 11 or so that got an additional 20 to 80 dollars in their accounts, didn't quite make the total 200. The one, the two challenges I think that we have to take seriously, and I think that are going to be further complicated by this year, the issue with COVID and how we're going to operate, is we did also have a significant number of families that we really don't know what happened. So despite Jenny's valiant efforts to be in touch with them and find out if the kids were actually doing the activities and getting their reactions, they just didn't respond. We also know there's some number of families that have moved out of the county, but we will hold those accounts open. So we have, this year, two big challenges. One is, depending on how the schools go, how are we going to design the new incentives? How much onsite, how much offsite, and that sort of thing without totally overburdening the parents? That's one. And the other is a broader question about parent engagement. We would like to have more involvement of parents, not just for the kids' activities, but from the point of view of parents getting, developing their own financial skills. That's a very, very hard one to do. People don't like to talk about that kind of stuff, but it is something that we're working on. So we really would appreciate any suggestions, any input. If you want more details about which activities they liked and completed, we would be happy to do that. I do want to say our funding is more than secure for another two years. And in addition to the funding for the accounts in Jenny's position, partly due to Headwaters and other funders, we also have a grant for evaluation. So that's the second piece that will be different this year. Again, it's pretty much outlined. We need to kind of see if the schools getting settled down, getting started before we kick that off. But one of the key features of that will be a second grade survey so that the second graders who will not have been exposed to this, the accounts and the financial education activities, will become a kind of a baseline. So going forward, we'll be able to get some sense of how effective this is, not just how many kids participate, but other features as well, by comparing the second grade cohort as they move forward versus the kindergartners and the new first graders. So be happy to answer any questions. But I'm going to turn it over to Jenny, who is the life and soul of this.
I know we don't have much time, but I did just want to tell you just briefly how this worked. The kindergartners got little bingo cards. So the little bingo card said, here are nine activities that you can complete, and if you do five of them, you can have $100 put into your savings account. So each one was worth $20. So there were nine different choices, lots of different choices. So some were in the classroom. The kids would just do them anyway. Some were things that they could do with their families at home, so they could go to the grocery store with their parent and purchase something, or go to a bank, or do their chores and get a little money. And then others were for parents. So the parents could come to a workshop that we held. So they, for instance, we had a Virginia 529 workshop, and if a parent came to that workshop, then they had, they earned $20 for their child for their My Future account. So they were very successful, and then COVID hit. So when COVID hit, we had to be creative and started sending home little letters every single week with a little activity. They all had to fit inside of an envelope. So they did a lot of different kinds of, you know, money adding to figure out a clue, you know, what's Miss Jenny's favorite food? Cookies. And then they had a little cookie recipe, and they could make cookie coins. I mean, things like that. So it was a lot of fun, a lot of hands-on things, a lot of things that involved the families. Very successful. Parents appreciated it. Not only did they appreciate having the savings accounts, but I think they also really appreciated having these activities. So I think all in all, it was a huge success. And we're very excited about this year, despite whatever happens. You know, it's going to happen, and we're going to be fine. This is a great, great program. I just, I know we're running out of time, but I just want to hold up quickly some pictures. The parents did send some pictures of some of these activities. We have many, many pictures. We're just going to show you a very few. The pictures will be put into, in the hallway, the kindergarten and first grade hallway with a big My Future wall. So you would be able to go there and actually see some of these kids in action. We did start off in January with a big birthday party for My Future because, of course, this is just a new program. You brought little piggy banks for the kids, and we had cupcakes, and the kids were so excited. Look at those faces! They were so excited to know that they were going to have a good time learning about money and then having money put into a savings account for them. And you can, yeah. So anyway, there's a lot of very cute, wonderful pictures. Some of these pictures here are of kids at home doing activities with their parents. These are some of the, kids were sent books home. That was one of the things that they got to have. They had to fill little paper coin holders with money. They had to go on a coin hunt, find $17.50, and then they had to tell me what they would do with $17.50, which was hilarious. They had some really great answers, you know? So all in all, it was a huge, huge, huge success. And again, we're very excited for this coming year. So thank you.
Great, is there any questions? Any questions? So you guys, you didn't get kicked off until January.
That's right. So we started in January. So we did programming until March, and then come March, it was like,
Two and a half months.
Yeah. But we managed. I mean, all in all, there were, we sent home nine activities for the kids. So they had, you know, plenty of opportunities to earn the additional $100. So it went well. All in all, it really did go well.
And Ann said $9,773, I think, was the number for you, Ann. And that's all, I just want to remind people, that is completely private-funded, $9,773. And Ann saying that, you know, they've got the next two years already planned out. So a great benefit.
Yeah, I think so, too.
And an education that goes along with it. So it's just a wonderful program. Thank you all for what you're doing. And I know, you know, this isn't easy for anyone, so everything you're doing is appreciated.
Thank you so much.
Make sure you know that.
The school account made us $200 before school books.
It's like the New York account.
And he did all of the exercises that Jenny did.
Teacher's bet.
And if someone wants the financial coaching, how do they do that? If someone might be interested in engaging it? Like, I see there's a good testimonial about how useful.
Yes, so their financial coaching is a piece of this as well. So we do offer that, and it's really not just financial coaching. We're calling it My Future Coaching. So if parents, if anybody wanted to call to talk about how to move towards a specific goal, whether it's financial or not, quite frankly, they can do that. And of course, it's all confidential. You know, we can meet at any time, so the people,
You could meet virtually.
Sorry? We can meet virtually, absolutely, yes. So we're really trying to push that as well.
That's great.
Yeah, so thank you again.
Any other questions?
Anymore?
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Thank you so much, ladies.
Good job. Great program.
We couldn't be more thrilled that it's finally happening, and when it just got off the ground, and Jenny and Ann and Headwaters and everyone involved just made it come to life. It just, oh, I choke up a little bit, honestly.
I know, you know, it reminds me of when Commit to Be Fit was just kicking off, we're like, oh, that seems pretty neat. I wonder how this is going to turn out? And look how it's turned out. I mean, this is a Genesis-type of project, and it's going to, it's really taking hold, so it's a great thing. And educating people on finances, my goodness. That's a great value. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Carol Johnson, if you don't mind coming up to give us just a few words about our regional special education program, MOU?
Good evening. I'm here to request this evening a slight update to our memorandum of understanding for our regional tuition program agreement with Falkir County. The original agreement had the fiscal agent as being a collective between Rappahannock and Falkir Counties. However, each school division has been managing the funding within their own school divisions. So at the advice of the school board attorney in Falkir County, they said that we could update the language in the agreement so that we could reflect what was actually happening with the funds, which is each school division has the management over their own funds that they're receiving from the state. So I would like to request a slight revision to that memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
And Carol, Warren and Falkir are expecting that change as well?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Any other questions? We'll be voting on this tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item 4.4 is our annual review of the crisis management plan. This is not an item that really needs to be voted upon because we are always adapting, evolving, and changing based on our state-level and local-level emergency response providers. So it is up on the executive side for your review. And if you have anything that you have questions about, please talk to me separately or go through Mr. Mills. He can answer that. Okay, 4.5, an update on the Wellness Center. I am pleased to say that we are moving forward. We, the steering committee for our Fit Kids Clinic, which is the planning grant program that we just received from the PATH Foundation, will move forward to do a feasibility study and plausibility analysis to see if this is a workable model of something we can do based within the elementary school. So what I've put on here for your review is the scope of work of the consultant that we are hiring, School-Based Health Alliance. They are a consultant group out of DC who has so much experience developing these programs and working with the steering committee, providing the training and conducting feasibility studies to really find a way to make something like this workable. And also, I've provided the Wellness Center Grant Project Coordinator, a grant-funded position to help manage and run this program. And I could not be more thrilled to have this person coming on. So I will make a recommendation to you during closed session for this person as well. And then when we come out, I'll be able to say more about that.
Great.
But that's where we are. Do you have any questions about that?
It's going to be a challenge doing this.
Yes.
And this is kind of a hands-on kind of thing, but we'll get it.
Well, and it's a great timing for a clinic when you have to provide so much mitigation containment and health analysis, and having a real bona fide clinic in your school would be just incredible. But the hard part, you're exactly right, is healthcare providers are very strapped and limited right now. So that, the providers we initially thought we had on board may not be just yet. Still very, very interested, but, so that's part of what we'll be doing is working with providers to find out what is feasible, what can they do, what do the commitments look like? What does the funding model look like? What do the systems look like? So there is a whole lot that goes into it. But also, what we do know is we have mental health providers who now, because of COVID-19, have had to build a telehealth and telepsych infrastructure that really wasn't there before. So the availability of mental health providers has increased, and the capability of something that we could do here could be feasible pretty soon. And that's something we know is a high need with everything going on. So in some way, shape, or form, we will be able to provide additional services by providers through this program.
And what is the timeframe in terms of, I mean, this is a planning grant, so this isn't actually something where we're planning next month to open. It's really setting it in motion. Can you give a time, a little brush?
Sure. So getting the mental health providers into start working can be a part of this program, pretty close to immediately because we do have some funding to do that. But actually, opening the Wellness Center under the umbrella of a provider, doing all the billing and medical insurance and things like that, will take more time. So we hope to have the work plan developed by the end of the year to submit and maybe roll into an operational plan or another grant program. It depends on the sustainability model we're able to construct as a part of this exercise, so.
So at the end of the year, you mean the end of 2020?
Yes.
So it could be during this school year?
Yeah, we hope to conduct that by the end of this. Now, the work plan that our consultant will work through has a later timeframe for getting the medical piece off the ground. But there's a lot of pieces we can do with the, put in the door with the mental health providers that will help us build that infrastructure a little, just a little more slowly than we had anticipated at first. But by springtime next year, we'll have a pretty good sense of what we could open for the next school year as a full operational clinic, if it, you know, if it's feasible.
So between now and the end of the calendar year, we'll probably be getting updates about, here's what we think about, you know, this dimension of the project, this dimension of the project.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions?
All right, the reopening update. So we have been extremely busy ever since we had an adopted plan. So thank you so much for approving our reopening plan. That set a lot of other things in motion to make this logistically possible. So I just want to cover quickly kind of what's been going on. There we go.
Hey, Shannon?
Yes.
Which, so we have five attachments, and I can't see that very well. So which one is it that you just opened?
The reopening update presentation? Okay, so we'll go through kind of what we found out because, remember, after you approved the plan, our next phase was to call every individual family and really find out about their needs, and also be able to explain and work through the plan with them. And we also collected quite a bit of data that was so helpful in designing an instructional program that's going to be effective. So I'll share some of that, go through new teacher orientation, the professional development our staff has gone through and is still going through up until the 21st, the parent back-to-school communication mechanisms we're using. We have a new back-to-school info page on our website that will be updated regularly. And then at the end of this, I'm going to ask Mrs. Courtney Atkins to come up and give us a very thorough presentation about the health mitigation strategies. We're getting a lot of questions about that. So she's going to walk you through the entire health and safety plan, what happens if there's a positive exposure, what happens if this happens, and what does the state experts tell us. So she will walk through all of that with us. Okay, so reentry calls. We had about 10 or 11 of us administrators who made over 700 calls in six days to all of our families to really get a good sense of what they're feeling, what their needs are. We needed to know very precisely what our families were planning to do because that is so integral in this planning. We gave options in our plan, as you know, for parents to choose remote options for their child or even apply for a four-day option with the understanding that it's not guaranteed. It's really based on numbers, and we broke that down by grade level, by class. So we never went over and exceeded our capacity. So applications are due this Friday. So that'll be the point at which we take all of our four-day applicants. We have a rubric that we score so we can make sure that our neediest and most vulnerable students get those slots first. And then we'll make those determinations and send letters to our families. So that's what's going on there. So this Friday, we'll find out for sure, and parents will hear from us very shortly after that. Okay, reentry call data. 83% of our families want to come back to school in some form or another. 15% of those want to come four days. 17% chose the remote option. And we lost less than 1% to go total homeschool, which was good to see because we thought it could be more potentially.
Yeah.
And a lot of that data that we accumulated from families said, you know, after we announced the Virtual Virginia in Canvas, and now we have a learning management system and a more robust remote learning system. I think that helped quite a bit. I know our teachers were pretty relieved to have, have to not create entire course content for remote and for in-person, so. Internet access. So only 34% of our families have reliable, high-speed internet. So 68% of families reported that they had either no internet, very slow, or unreliable services.
Did you reach 100% of the families?
Yeah, I mean, after, if we didn't get them by phone, we offered a Google form. So we sent out, if you did not get a call or we left messages, then please send out, sign up on the Google form.
The 34%, well, I'm asking, 34% is a total number? It's a number of the total group, not the 85 or whatever?
Right, total.
Okay, thank you.
And I should say 66, sorry about that. 66% of families reported that they had either no internet, very slow. So that makes remote learning and virtual learning a very difficult scenario when you have an accessibility issue like that. So how are we going to solve that? So that was super important data. And the reason why the Canvas LMS system, learning management system, was so important because it has so many work offline components that we can incorporate on the provided devices that we're giving to students. So if you pair that, you really narrow down the accessibility gap and the equity gap there. We welcomed our new teachers and staff with open arms, far away, air hugged. So just, I know you probably saw the social media posts. We have Kelso Nick teaching kindergarten, Savannah Nave in fourth grade, Eva Payne returning to teach dual enrollment history, and the ISAP Alternative Education Program, Elaine Snyder, our instructional aide at the elementary school, Cecilia Lopiano, second grade teacher, Brianna Leach, our new band director, Carly Moore, our behavior specialist, Joanna Ford, RCHS Special Education, and Lee Bernstein, our new Virginia College advisor. So great group of people, really enthusiastic and gung-ho. We had orientation for that group August 3rd and 4th, and these are all of the things that we were able to do with them. Lots of training, a lot of orientation and acclimating to the community. And so they had a pretty full slate. Teacher and staff professional development is pretty extensive. We do have a lot more time than usual because we pushed back the start date of school to August 24th, but there's a whole lot to pack in that time. So I know they've been very, very busy. We've had the health and safety mitigation protocols that came absolutely first, so everyone understands what they have to do and they have to comply with. The new social-emotional learning curriculum expectations, the Mental Health Innovators Team was able to present to staff on how that's going to work. We had an online convocation and staff recognition ceremony. We had an online convocation and staff recognition ceremony. A lot of our professional development opportunities were also offered virtually for teachers. So they were here, working in their classrooms, but they could also log in or any teachers we had working remotely could log in as well. So we had the Virtual Virginia in Canvas orientation to get everybody kind of just an overview. And they are currently working right now on a two-week self-paced course to really work through their entire course that they're building in Canvas, which all of that is preloaded content already so well-aligned. So now our teachers don't have to spend so much time recreating everything and developing that content because of the state contract with Virtual Virginia for the Canvas LMS, which is all that Virtual Virginia content in there. They can simply utilize that, utilize that material, but also create their own and have some autonomy in that too on how they pace it and, you know, what materials they put in. We have tomorrow honoring the diversity of every student with Dr. Larry Bell, part of equity training for our staff. Performance Matters Testing is our diagnostic platform. It's been called Interactive Achievement and Power School Analytics, basically the same thing, just another name. So our teachers need a training on that too. There was Title IX Required Training. And then our teachers got involved and wanted to help each other out. This was really cool. So they said, hey, in quarter four, when I was trying this, I found this really great strategy, can I share it? Like, yes, absolutely. So we had several teachers like Scott Schlosser, who did how CTE teachers can use Zoom as a, as a platform to reach students at home. Introducing Graphing Tablet and Stylus by Creighton Long and Don Roseberry. As part of our CARES Act funding, we provided all teachers with this tool to be able to better record lessons virtually. So every single teacher received one and then our own teachers actually gave the training on how to use them. So every teacher has that tool as well. And then how to make videos on video editor, adding apps on Canvas. Michelle Fincham, our new ag teacher, introduced our CTE teachers to ISEV, which integrates with Canvas, which is a whole other learning management system for career and tech. So now they have that at their fingertips, so they have a Canvas for CTE. It's wonderful. And then principals did some trainings on Zoom. We had grade books setting up. And then we also had these optional resources for online teaching and learning through the Ed Consortium that we joined with LFCC. So teachers could earn up to 45 recertification points by going through all of these modules and then applying it to their, their classrooms. So we had many, many teachers actually do these live over the summer and then they did record the sessions and said you can still use them as part of your professional development. They're very, very helpful for many of our teachers. Teaching in this modality is very different, but it's making us better professionals, better teachers, better differentiators by better diagnostics. It's, you know, it's really going to build our skill set, I'll tell you that much, but giving them all the tools and necessary training to do that was very important. We now, how we're communicating with parents about everything is through this new school reopening information page on our website. We're going to try to put everything there that's related to the reopening plan and back-to-school in one spot so people don't have to dig through all their emails and go through Facebook and try to find everything. And then also, we've put out a back-to-school bulletin with all the pertinent information we want parents to know. And parents, if you haven't already, please work with your child on how to wear a mask. They will need to wear them in school for, for quite a bit, especially in any transition times and anytime six-foot social distancing doesn't occur. So please start working and there's some tips in there in the bulletin on how you can do that creatively, especially with younger children. Do you have any questions about what I've said before I give it over to Courtney? Okay, Ms. Courtney Atkins. And that attachment I will bring up says health and safety presentation.
Great.
All right, well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. This might have Courtney Atkins on it, but it was really a collaboration effort with Dr. Grimsley, Dr. Johnson, and all of our administration and our wonderful staff and really just coming together as a team to make sure our schools are as safe and healthy as possible once students and staff start returning. So I just wanted to basically start with a talk about some transmission. How is COVID transmitted? And basically, we've heard time and time again that it's mainly from person to person through respiratory droplets. Those are produced when an infected person coughs, sneezes, talks or raises their voice loudly, shouting, and then the droplets can land in the mouths or noses of another person. COVID has shown, been shown in some studies to live in the aerosol, so if you were to cough or sneeze and walk away, it has been shown to live in some. I know there were some studies with the band and they talked about the aerosol a lot. And so we are looking at that as well. So that's why it's important to have good airflow in the rooms and outdoor vents are better as well. So, and then the wearing of masks or face coverings has been shown to significantly slow the transmission. So it creates a barrier. So these aren't your N95 masks that you would see in a healthcare setting, but we are stopping the transmission of the droplets by wearing these. So it's very important and it's one of our big mitigation strategies that we're going to implement in the schools and we already have been. And yes, it's a learning process and we're all learning to get used to this new way of coming to work and to, for our students. So daily reminders, I mean, Mr. Swinler's already on top of it, sending us daily reminders about wearing our masks and yes, you know, we have to always have in the back of our mind, this goes with us everywhere we go. And so we're really working hard on that. Even back at the first week, I feel like, you know, staff is already starting to get it. And so we're hoping to continue to move in that direction. And then, of course, maintaining the six feet or greater between persons is probably one of the most effective things as well. Just some basic mitigation procedures. Hand washing is key. We know that when we touch things, touch surfaces that might be infected or if someone coughs and sneezes and then we touch our face, we know that hand washing has been proven time and time again with disease in general. So just good hand washing. We're going to really focus on that with especially our little ones and making sure that we're doing frequent hand washing, use of hand sanitizers. And of course, I just discussed the masks and the face coverings. Avoid the close contact, cleaning and disinfecting. And these are some tips, tips that I gave especially to staff. Eat a well-balanced diet, keep yourself hydrated, exercise regularly, and get plenty of sleep. We know all of these things are so good for our bodies that we don't do on a regular basis. So when diseases or viruses do hit us, these things, if we're doing these things, it helps us recover faster. It's not to say that we're not going to get sick, but it is a great way to keep your body and your immune system in check. So every staff member will start their day with a self-screening. They have already all signed an attestation sheet, which they're attesting to when they show up for work every day, that they are fever-free, they do not have the list of symptoms of COVID, and that they're self-reporting when they come to work that they are well. They also do a check-in every day. They have two options. I created a Google form for them that they could send it and then it automatically pops into a spreadsheet for us. And so that's been really helpful. Or they, if they're paper and pencil, or paper and pen, they have a log they can keep in their classroom that we'll collect as well. So they have a couple of options of how to check in every day and they'll do their own self-temperature check and record all of that for us.
Courtney, is there any way we could put that on a phone?
Yes, there is a way. Yes, absolutely. Mrs. Robie was really good at that and Crystal also showed us how to put it on our desktop. So I'll send all that information to you all if that works.
That'd be great.
All right, sure.
I would assume we have to do the same thing if we come to a building?
Correct, yes. And then health screening for students, it looks a little bit different. The parents will have a health attestation sheet for their students as well that they will fill out and sign. It's very similar to the employee one. Basically, the parent taking responsibility, responsibility that when they send their children to school, they are attesting that they are well, they're fever-free, and that they don't meet any other criteria of COVID. CDC has just recently determined that they don't feel, or they don't recommend that universal symptom screenings is appropriate for all students K through 12. So they don't really feel it necessary to ask every single student that comes in the building these five questions or whatever every day. But we are going to do the temperature checks. We feel like that's a way we can, you know, mitigate and just maybe catch someone who might not be feeling well that day. But we are not going to go through a form every day. It just, with preschoolers to high schoolers, you'll just get the gamut of answers. And so we feel like with the parents attesting to their health and with the temperature checks, we feel like we're doing our due diligence for when they enter the building. We will also send a lot of education on staying home when sick. We know that kids are sent to school sick a lot. Parents work, things become difficult with childcare and daycare, so we want to really educate our parents on what's important and when to stay home and when to keep your child We'll also have a screening process for visitors. So at this time, we're only allowing essential visitors into the buildings and they'll have to have a scheduled appointment with an administrator or staff member. We will not be permitting any random visitation such as lunch visits and things like that. The visitors will be subject to a health screening and a temperature check before entering the building. So they will have a sheet that they check, yes or no. Anyone of 100 or more is automatically not permitted into the building and they'll have to reschedule their appointment. And of course, visitors will be wearing a mask while they're in the building. And if parents or guardians are calling or coming to get their child early from school, we would like them to call ahead and that way we're prepared for that. We can have the student ready in the main office and then the parents can enter the portico, but they must wear a mask. So we've determined that if a parent enters the portico to pick up their child, we don't necessarily need to screen them, but they will wear a mask, be required to wear a mask when they enter to pick up their child. And we're asking only one, one parent or guardian come to pick them up. All right, so moving into the illness and exposure guidelines. Obviously, this is the big thing. If you're not feeling well and experience any of these symptoms, stay at home. I encourage staff, when I spoke to staff, I encourage them to call your administrator. We will secure a substitute for you. We need to make sure they understand it's okay to not feel well and to stay at home and we really want them to understand that. So the basic symptoms that we're going by, of course, are the fever. We made it 100 degrees. A lot of places you'll see 100.4, 100.3. We really felt like, I mean, as nursing, I feel like if you're at 100, there's something going on. So we really wanted to knock that down and make it 100 even. And then chills, new coughs, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, new loss of taste or smell, some of the things that's been presenting and others is nausea, vomiting, diarrhea. Honestly, even if that's not COVID-related, you really shouldn't be in school. Yeah, so, yeah, from the nurse's standpoint, just don't show up if you're throwing up or have diarrhea. So, and of course, if, if you had known exposure to someone, even if you're not symptomatic and even if you are feeling great, but you know someone in your household or someone you've cared for has been deemed positive with COVID, do not arrive to the school building.
Should someone, let's say someone is exposed, would it not be beneficial for everybody if they contacted the school and let them know that there's been an exposure?
Sure, yes. So the, if it's an employee or a student?
Or a student.
Okay, so if an employee or a student has been known to, they do contact us. And then we call VDH just to make sure. But what VDH is saying is that the person that was in the building was an exposed person, not a positive person. So we don't trace off of exposed persons to exposed persons. So we only trace off of a positive test. Am I making sense? I know it's hard, like, to think about the, the tree there, but it's really difficult to take an exposed person and then trace another exposed person off of that exposed person. So if the employee or the student is positive, then we will trace.
And what about in the time between, you know, if someone is exposed, sometimes it can take three days or so for a test to come back. What do you do in that?
So in, in that timeframe, we are very transparent in our communication with staff and we're just asking them to pay attention to their body, look for symptoms. You know, we're, we do extra cleaning, things like that. But the VDH is not going to shut our building down for an exposed of an exposed.
But if a parent chooses to? If a parent were to say, well, I know that a child in my kid's classroom was with someone who was exposed, a parent wouldn't be penalized for choosing to keep her child home?
Absolutely not. No, absolutely not. No, no. That is definitely, we want to be very respectful of those that choose to remove their child or remove themselves as a staff member if they feel they were at risk. That, that won't even be a question. Some of the return to school guidelines, this is when you may resume in-person instruction. So this is for staff and students. If you arrive with symptoms or you're at home and you develop symptoms of COVID or you present a positive COVID test, you are automatically not in school for 10 days and then you have to be symptom-free and then fever-free for 24 hours without fever-reducing medications and you have felt well. So these aren't ors, these are ands, okay? So 10 days and symptom-free and fever-free and felt well for 24 hours. If you end up getting tested and you're negative, you are allowed to return to school within our normal guidelines of fever-free for 24 hours without fever-reducing medications and you have felt well for 24 hours. So this is kind of our normal return to school protocol. The same is true. Let's say we have someone that comes with symptoms and we know that COVID symptoms can look just like a lot of other diseases, especially childhood diseases. So if you so choose to go as an employee or your parent decides to take the student and they receive an alternate diagnosis from a physician such as strep throat and they've been on their proper antibiotics for 24 to 48 hours and they're fever-free without Tylenol or ibuprofen, they may return to school. So you can present with an alternate diagnosis so you don't have to take the full 10 days. We touched on this a little bit about contact tracing. Students or staff, if they report a positive COVID test, they have an auto, oh, this is, I'm sorry, this is exposure. So if we have a staff member or a student that has been exposed, they have an automatic 14-day quarantine from school. So an exposed person gets a 14-day quarantine because there, maybe symptoms haven't shown, but they might show in the next couple of days. So exposures are given two weeks versus 10 days because they feel like if you presented with symptoms or that you have a known positive test, that 10 days is a sufficient amount of time. But in exposure, we give a little bit longer to make sure that we cover all of the incubation period of when you can present with symptoms.
And how do we know someone's been exposed to a positive?
I would say, well, that's based off of what VDH, so let's say there's a husband and a wife and the wife becomes positive and the husband works for us. VDH will trace off of the wife's phone call and so he would be considered a close contact. So close contact, exposure is closer than six feet for greater than 15 minutes. And that's what VDH will consider as a close contact and then you would have to quarantine.
That would be true of students as well.
Correct, yes. So if they had a mother or father, yes.
Right.
Okay, so if we have a confirmed COVID-19 case in the schools, the first thing we do, this is just the, the background, I'll get into what we actually do with, with the person themselves. But the local health officials are immediately notified and they'll likely be possibly a short-term dismissal of students or staff based on the studies that VDH does on our schools. So they'll determine if we have a major outbreak or if we have an isolated case that has been contained well and we do our cleaning, we could have a short dismissal. But we will always follow the guidance of the experts if we feel like an extended closure is needed. During this short-term closure, if we have to go there, that two to five days gives us a couple of things. It gives us time to clean and it gives us time to determine what the actual outbreak or not an outbreak is. So that gives the VDH time to really investigate with us as to where we need to go or how long we may need to stay closed. When we do the terminal cleaning, all the areas that were used by the person who is sick will be closed off for 24 hours and no one will go, and we'll open outside doors and windows to increase the circulation and no one will go in for 24 hours to clean. So we'll wait the 24 hours. Now, if we are put on a more extended of a closure, then we can wait longer than 24 hours to give our cleaning staff that much more time to not be in the rooms or areas where the sick person was. And then, of course, after the 24 hours, we'll clean and disinfect all areas and then areas may reopen after appropriate disinfection. And so workers without close contact with the person can return to work immediately after the disinfection. And if we have to close for more, seven days or more have passed, let's say we're on Christmas break or something like that, we only need to do routine cleaning and disinfecting when we return. We don't need to do any deep cleaning if seven days have passed because the virus has probably died. because the virus has probably died off by then on all surfaces. I talked a little bit with staff. The Virginia Board of School Nurses came out with some ideas that we may consider some things more classroom-based for nursing care to help reduce the movement of kids within the school and moving one person versus multiple children. We talked about, there's just a list of things here that definitely need to be in the nurse's office, definitely need to happen in the nurse's office. And you'll see there, you know, any trauma, seizures, diabetic care, a tooth that's been knocked out or something like that, symptoms of COVID. All of those things, they warrant an office visit, okay? Other things that may be considered classroom-based are some medications. At the high school, we're allowed to give Ibuprofen and Tylenol with parental permission. And so that may be an option. Any small cuts that could just, a pick scab that could just use a Band-Aid, we're going to supply all teachers with a first aid kit in their room for those small things. So just a couple of other things, the first aid kits. The feminine products will be supplied in the women's restroom for our young women. And then I really stress to staff to not hesitate to call the school nurse. I don't want them to feel like I'm supposed to take care of everything in the classroom now. And that's not the case. And so, and I just want them to understand that emergency care will override any risk that I feel for COVID. So if, if a child or staff member needs me to take care of them, that's going to be my first priority. So emergency care, once again, overrides any concern of our exposure. This just goes through a little bit of our cleaning and disinfecting. We'll supply all the sanitation supplies needed, the gloves, the wipes, the masks, any kind of cleaner that we'll be using. And we'll provide every staff member with a cloth face covering. We've also ordered some disposable ones. And we also have the KN95s, not the true N95s, but we have the KN95s which are a little, a little better. But of course, the N95s are being used for healthcare settings. So we talked a little bit to staff about sharing supplies, books, toys, things like that. We really are discouraging any kind of use of shared products. So writing implements, crayons, things like that. Every child should have their own supply of those. You can wipe down pens, things like that, but pencils and crayons, they become a little more difficult. There are some studies that came out of how long COVID lives on certain surfaces. The big thing we talked about was books, because I know that we share books. And some teachers, when a student is finished with them, they'd like to pass it along. Well, books can't really be cleaned. So there, there's two ways to make sure that we are virus-free on surfaces. One is cleaning it, and two is time. And so if we can't clean it, then we're going to use a timeframe. And of course, when I'm using a timeframe, I'm going to use the end, the high end of the spectrum. So if they tell me on paper it's minutes to five days, I'm going to use the five days. And so books will be placed in their own container for five days. And once that timeframe has passed, they're free to pass those along to the next student. We are, are wiping desks every two hours regardless. And if they're soiled in between or before eating and after eating, the desks will be wiped in the classroom. Drinking water was a big topic of discussion. And thanks to Mandy, I don't know if she's still here. Mandy and I collaborated on this, and we, we can use the water filling stations. We can't use the mouthpiece on the watering fountains, but we can use the water filling stations. So water bottles are great for kids to bring. And we're also supplying little mini water bottles in the classrooms in case they can't get out of the classroom to get something. Every teacher will have a case in their room. And so I just wanted to give you a little update as well while I'm, while I'm here on athletics and activities and band and what's happening in that world. So from VHSL, they've delayed our regular seasons and our competitions. They drafted a timeline, but they don't want to put any dates out because they don't want people saying, well, this is definite. So what they're looking at is going winter, fall, spring. And so December to February will be winter, February to April is our fall, and then April to June will be our spring. There is some overlap there with our seasons. We always have a little bit of overlap, but we do have a lot of double and triple athletes. So this, this will take some, some time and some maneuvering, especially if they do decide to have a postseason play or competition or state competition. If we indeed have successful teams that move into that, we'll have to get creative in moving on to the next season. The band director, she is wonderful. Brianna, she has met, I think, with band booster parents, and she's looking at all the studies. For now, marching band is not occurring, and they're working on how they're going to do band in, in the classroom. But for now, there's no actual marching band occurring. And they're going to revisit that after some other studies come out.
I was glad to hear that band, they're ordering special PPE for the, played with instruments and wrapped around the bells of the, of the trumpet or things like that.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
She brought so much knowledge because, yeah, when I met with her, I was like, wow, that's really cool. Yes.
She must be doing a great job of having any phone calls.
Yeah. Yeah, she, she's really just, yeah, she's going to be great. So I'm super excited she's here. We are going to continue preseason workouts and practices under the guidance of VHSL. They just released, about two weeks ago, they released their Phase 3 guidance. So their guidance coincides with the phases of Virginia. So we are allowed to hold team-based workouts, still maintaining that, that distance as much as possible. Masks are not required when you're exercising or doing vigorous activity. We are allowed to use our weight rooms, but the weight room, it'll be staggered. So we'll only have just a couple of students in at a time, and they will never be on equipment next to each other. And everything is cleaned before the next person comes in. All right, so.
How about the, it's academic and, or the quiz bowl?
We have not heard how, how that's going to go. They haven't made any decisions yet. That's in the spring usually, yeah. But Classic Bowl is still on schedule to go in the winter as they normally do for their regular season competitions. So you see all these slides and you, and you wonder why, why are we trying? We're doing all this work. Why, why do we want to offer in-person instruction? So it's really important for us to remember, even though we may be surrounded by areas such as Northern Virginia and things like that, we are really in a unique place, and that is that we are in a very low transmission area. Just running the numbers last night, I mean, we're still way under even a percent of our population of how many people have tested positive in our county. Our parents are returning to work, our businesses are reopening, reopening, and they're using mitigation strategies. And we feel as a team here at the schools that we can really use these mitigation strategies to make this a place where kids can come back for in-person instruction. The American Academy of Pediatrics, they know that children learn best when they're in school. Safety measures, careful steps are going to be implemented. Evidence suggests that children and adolescents are less likely to have the symptoms or the severe disease. And they're showing some more studies that they might not be the transmitter as much as we thought. And so those are great things to help us get our kids back in here where they need to be. And not every child can learn remotely. And we want to be conscious of that, that we do have children that can learn remotely, and they do wonderful with it, and we want to be able to offer that, which Virtual Virginia, that's been amazing to be able to offer that. But we do know there's that population of children that really need to be here. And they gain so much more in school than just the academics. It's the mental, it's the social emotional, it's the nutrition. There's so many aspects to school that are so important for our children, and we really want to strive to get them in here. And so we're willing to do the work. We're willing to get down to the nitty-gritty and really make sure these things happen to make this a safe place. And of course, we know that all education cannot be replicated online. And so we feel, you know, I didn't start as an educator, but you know, just being around wonderful teachers, having wonderful teachers myself, I think it's important that we offer this in-person instruction for our students. And then, of course, there's a collaboration statement by the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Federation of Teachers, and the School Superintendent's Association. And the article, the full article or the full statement is on one of these links. But they really are working together. Educators and pediatricians share the goal of children returning safely to school this fall. Our organizations are committed to doing everything we can so that all students have the opportunity to safely resume in-person learning. So everyone's like-minded in their goal. And so we're just going to follow those safety steps to make that happen. And I showed this to the staff. And the biggest thing is we're all going to stay calm. We're going to work together and make sure we laugh because it's really important to maintain the camaraderie and to laugh and, you know, just be together and make sure this all works. So do you have any questions?
Any questions? Any more questions?
Well, I find this to be exceptional.
Thank you.
Phenomenal.
Thank you.
Overwhelming.
Can't do anything else.
You know, you can tell there's a lot of work. And I appreciate you presenting it to us, Courtney.
Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Any, any other questions?
I have just a, an idea that I was wondering if you were looking at. It's going to be sort of the part of the mental health piece of not being able to see your friend's face or your teacher's face. I know that in some, like, healthcare settings, they have, you know, a bit larger picture of a headshot of the smiling nurse that's taking care of you. I don't know if we could maybe work with PTO or with some organization.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are cute. I have seen those. Those are adorable.
It could be, it could make you not notice the mask as well if you could still see the person's face. And it could be calming effect, especially, I mean, if any kid, anybody, really.
I do love that idea. And the other thing, speaking of laughing, so. Have you seen those masks with the, where you can see the smile? So Ms. Gates was very, she's like, we can get this for all our staff. We could see smiling face. She's like, I'm going to try it out. So she puts it on and immediately foxes. You can't see anything. Don't believe everything you see. As long as you don't breathe, you're okay.
A button with a, with an unmasked face would be a great idea.
I do love that idea.
My son is a hotel, is a manager of a hotel. And he has, every employee has a, a picture with a smile. And it says, "We do smile under these things."
I like that. You might steal that.
Yeah, I think that's a good thing to steal right there.
Yeah, it could be just really reassuring. And as people get used to the feeling of wearing a mask, it might just mitigate some of that natural anxiety you'd have on not seeing people's faces.
Now, we know for primary, we'll be using face shields, especially during language proficiency instruction. They really need to see the mouth, informing letters, letter formation, phonological awareness. That cannot happen with this on. So for our primary, we do have face shields available. And we actually had a member of the community who actually made them for us. We got over 400 for free that they donated to us. So we're thrilled about that.
Are they, they're cleanable?
Yes. They're cleanable, and they're, you can cut the material too to make them smaller for smaller children. And they're very easily put on by just a, like, headband sort of thing that goes on. They're really easy to use.
So you don't have to use rivets or anything?
Right, yeah. Exactly.
Decorating.
And then the other comment that I had is it's nice that we can speak in normal tones without having to shout using these really good microphones.
Yes.
And I remember having a teacher, like a second grade teacher, who just, instead of ever needing to raise her voice, she just had a personal mic on. And is that something that could, because raising your voice, as, as you said in the presentation, it creates more micro, you know, little cloud of, of whatever's in your, in your lungs. I'm just curious if that's something.
If we, we saw the use of microphones? No, it hasn't something, it hasn't come up, but.
Now, we, we do use those for students who may need adaptive listening accommodations.
I know it would be a lot, but we have it for, on the stage and things like that.
And we'll have to see how, how that works inside the classroom. In the, in a big space like this, yes, you do have to raise your voice. And hopefully, the strategy I used to use as a teacher, I did the opposite and brought my voice way down until they brought it down to Milo. It was a great strategy as a teacher. So I don't know that they'll be raising it too much, but we, we can look, definitely adaptive listening for students who may be having trouble hearing, and then we can, we can look at that. Some of that technology can be expensive.
It could be harder to get the kid's attention with a face mask on.
Yeah.
That's funny thinking.
That's true. But it's a good idea, good to pay attention to, absolutely.
Good.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Courtney. I have one for you, Dr. Grimsley. So I see, you know, in the plan, great plan and mitigation. And I see the potential for extended absences, right?
Yes.
And, you know, I know what our substitute list looks like. And, you know, in the situation where we are using our substitutes and we are running out, right? This is the situation that I see that we, we need to plan. You know, I hope this is not true.
Right, right.
I hope it's not true, but we better plan for it. So I was thinking, you know, it was probably a decade ago or more, and I'm not sure what was driving this. But I remember the board giving the superintendent or administration the ability to recruit, fill positions.
Yes, yes.
And, and basically do it and get it done because we don't meet for another, you know, however many weeks. And basically, the board, I, I believe we did it like every month. We just said, "Continue this process." And we made a motion and approved it every month. We don't have to do that here. It's a different situation probably. But the idea is to give you the room to create a hiring process if you need it and to sta, and put people in their positions without waiting for a board vote. And then what happens is we end up, what's, there's a word for it, where we affirm, it's not affirm, but after the fact, we basically approve the hirings. Do you remember this before, Carol, when we did this before at all? No? So it was some time ago, and I don't remember what was driving it. But I think it might be prudent because you may need this flexibility, and I don't want us to get caught in a pickle. If we have to quarantine, you know, five people for 14 days, we, we're going to run out of substitutes that are willing to work that much or, or, you know, they, they might not want to come. Or I'm not sure what the situation might be. We just need to plan some flexibility, I think, so.
And we can look back and try to look for those procedures.
You know what? It's so long ago. But basically, this board could decide to, to give room to you to, to take care of the hiring process and sta, and put people on the ground as needed that are not currently on our approved list, but we would affirm them at a later time. Right? Does, does the board understand what I'm saying?
I understand. Yeah, I do. That would be very helpful.
You could affirm, but you would have, still have to go through the, the background checks.
Yeah, they would certainly go through the entire process that they currently go through, but they wouldn't wait for us to nod our heads. Good job on finding everyone, right? Because you need to be able to respond. And so all I would say is that potentially tonight, we give you that room. School's going to start in two weeks.
Yes, sir.
And so we need to give you that room to make sure we're prepared for that. Right? Any comment from you all about that?
That would be great. We can look at it and just be sure policy-wise we're, we're aligned. And I can float it by the school board attorney too, just to be sure we have.
Yeah, we've done it before. So if you want to try to find it in the notes in the minutes, we can try to find it, but you can't just Google search those things.
No, you can't.
So, because it's so long ago. But another we've done it before. And I recommend we do it again. And so.
That would be very helpful.
Whether we can find it or not, why don't we just ask the superintendent to create a, a motion and we'll do it.
Or we could make the motion now. And so, so I'll tell you what, we could just, let's just take care of it. Is it okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Do we do it during action or not?
We can, we can wait. Yeah, that would give me time to write down what I think the motion might be. Is that okay? All right, so I'll, I'll put it down here to edit as an action. Thank you. Is there anything else for the superintendent on reopening? Well done.
Great job.
Our plan is great compared to many that, you know, I've surfed through several counties' plans and, and, man, the team really put, put together a great plan. Good, kudos to everybody for coming together.
Write a book on that.
Yeah, I mean, they really did.
We'll guide. Little guidebook.
It was amazing. And all the, the community members that helped and the constant feedback and the, it just, it really did. It was a community effort. This is our plan. This is Rappahannock's plan. It's not just the superintendent's plan or any administration. So, we're very pleased with that. And it was very interesting because on the state superintendent call this morning, they did mention that a lot of schools are going to have a tough time opening on time because of waiting a little too long to order a lot of the PPE and the supplies. And, you know, we had started doing that back in March when we knew we even had an initial CARES Act allocation. And then, the supervisors were so kind to also position some additional CARES Act funding early on. So, we got all of our orders in way before the demand hit, to the point where other schools are now having trouble. I know the, some of the Chromebooks that we had ordered early on are about 115 days out from delivery. So, those things are going to make it really difficult for school districts, especially really big districts, to get those orders in.
One, one other thing that I don't think I heard is teachers returning. We, we have some that can't or?
Well, yeah, okay, I know where you're going. So, HR process is that, you know, the expectation is everybody has to come to work to do their jobs, but there are flexibilities. And, you know, I have a health condition, I'm in a high-risk area, I need healthcare accommodations. So, we've developed a process by which we, it's really case by case. We work with the employee, what are the conditions, what do you need to feel safe at work? If we can't make that and there's a way to maintain that person's job duties up to and including telework. But that's sort of the last resort before it goes into a COVID-expended FMLA leave. Okay, with, with two weeks of pay and then beyond no pay after that. So, trying to really hard to work with our employees to make sure they still are secure in their job and also feeling safe at work. And they've been amazing. They've been coming to us. Our employees have been very thankful. And nothing outrageous, honestly, from our staff. Very doable accommodations. We only have a few that are, will be working remotely. Very legitimate reasons for that. But no, our teachers were very willing to be here for their babies. They are, they're coming to work. Well, then that concludes the, the reports from the superintendent.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the reports from the board, report to the Headwaters representative, Ms. Bynum.
Yes, I talked with the executive director of Headwaters last week. She, she recapped the summer in the park. It was very successful. Thirty-five to 45 children and eight paid staff, five to 10 volunteers for each session, which is a lot to put together. Again, like they worked so hard to get this and the kids had a great time. I got to pop in a few times as well. And it was wonderful. And great to be out and using our park. That was wonderful. Headwaters is ready when we know numbers of families who will need, need, you know, after-school programs. They're ready to, to assist with that. And, and we'll just see what the numbers look like. So, that's, that's good. And then, we also wanted to make sure that we know that educational enrichment grants are available. There's, there's money available to teachers who need, need these grants. So, that's a, that's one of the services Headwaters is ready to provide as we start the school year as well. That's all.
That's great. That's great. All right, thank you very much. MBGS?
We had a Zoom meeting. And basically, all, all we needed to do was approve a change in date and calendar. We went from August 10th to August 24th. And it'll be full-time virtual for the first quarter, starting August 24th.
The first quarter, is that?
First quarter, October 20th or something like that.
All right, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So, a report from the Policy Committee. I see a folder full of the policy updates.
Yes.
And so, when it comes time for the motion, maybe the Policy Committee could just make that motion at that time. You have anything to add? Any?
No, there were a lot of.
More than enough, yeah.
What's that?
More than enough.
Jot some tittles? Dotting the t's?
Over everything I could possibly think of.
Right. Were there any questions regarding the policies that we were provided? Anybody? It's the intent to approve those policies tonight. All right, the VSB A 2020 Annual Convention. So, I see we got a flyer here and that the entire convention is virtual. And, you know, I forgot to check the cost. Does it cost the same?
That's what I was going to ask.
I'm thinking.
I was going to say, wait a minute.
The registration probably does, but now you're going to save a whole lot in travel. So, this would actually be a good year for everyone to get some required training.
But the registration is the same?
I think it's pretty close, yeah. What was it, 2.5?
It's not cheap.
But the travel is actually the part that gets you, it's a little more expensive. So, we'll be saving in that line because of course, we allocated planning for the full, so.
$260.
Yes.
Per person.
Per per.
Boy, I'm not sure that's.
That's a tough call.
We could use that for a mask.
So, yeah, so Amy.
We're all doing it for home.
Our clerk is expecting to find out from us so that we can.
They're doing it all day virtual?
Yes.
Oh, no.
What if one person registers and everybody hangs around?
I would imagine though, if you are our delegates.
The delegates probably should register.
You're going to have to register.
You're going to have to.
Okay.
Do I have to? I'm a citizen?
You're the, no, you don't have to unless I get sick. Then I'll give you my number.
How long do we have, Amy? Do you think? I didn't see a deadline.
It's not in the brochure.
Can we choose one day to do? I could do.
Yeah, we just picked the one day, right? We have the one, that is, the 260 is the one day, right?
Yeah. It's just the one day.
Yeah.
All the way to night owl.
I can't see that being as much fun as it is at the conference on your computer at night. We get to watch Jazz Band on their network, yeah.
I have a hard time spending money.
Yeah, I'm having a hard time with it too.
It doesn't seem like it's as beneficial as.
I mean, I don't mind doing what I'm supposed to do. But I don't think we should be spending $1,000 for.
No, I don't hate it.
No.
Everybody doing it.
Thinking, should we be spending 260, but yeah. So.
I think we have an obligation, being a part of the group, to at least have some representation.
I think that's right.
Well, if one person were to do it, could we have a report at a school board meeting on the, you know, the best points, Larry?
Now you've got homework.
Yeah, I'll give you a report. I'd be more than happy to.
Amy, for now, we'll register one person. That'll be Mr. Grove.
Grove, because he's the delegate.
He's our delegate. And.
We could tag you.
If I review this, this slide and find that there's something I just can't live without, we may, we might do a second one. But for goodness sakes, we could have at least cut the price of this thing.
I think, I think the economy of scale right now is probably best.
You're right, let's stick with one.
One is good.
We're going to do one.
260 bucks.
Yeah, there's no facility.
That'll give me a Zoom number, I guess.
Calls.
I'm sure they'll give us all the information upon registration, yeah.
I'll limit, I'll limit my report to 12 pages.
We did it. We did it. Thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Monday, November 9th is cut off the registration.
Good time, plenty of time.
All right, moving on to public comment.
It costs 50 bucks.
If, if you would like to address the board this evening, I ask you to rise and come to the microphone and, which is freshly cleaned. And let us know your name and your district. Anybody who would like to address the board? All right, moving on to action items. Is there a motion to approve the food service bids? We have a motion, Mr. Rubin, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bynum. Any comments, questions? Peas and carrots. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? And motion carries the approval of the Regional Special Education Program Memorandum of Understanding the Changes That Were Made. Is there a motion to approve it as it was modified?
So moved.
Motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rubin, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? So ordered, approval of, of the, the May 2020 and July 2020 policy updates. Who wants to make that motion?
So moved.
Mr. Rubin has the motion. Is there a second?
I can second it.
Ms. Meyer, is the second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? So ordered, and the new action item. So, I'm going to read what I wrote, okay?
8.4.
And then you guys, yes, 8 up 4. And then, and if you don't like it, then we'll talk about it, because I just made it up. I started it out this way, because I don't like doing the same thing every month. This would be the motion. Amy, I'll, I'll give you this after I figure out what it's going to say. During the school year 2021, to be approved by the board afterward, afterward, find and fill positions required to respond to vacancies brought about by COVID-19. Okay? Does that make sense? Do you see the intent? Is there any clarification that needs to be made to that? That's the motion.
Would it be subsequent?
I'll read it again.
Would that be the word, subsequent?
Subsequent approval.
Yeah.
Subsequent.
With subsequent.
Subsequent.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah.
And then the background check?
And we, we should be state or we should assume that we have the normal vetting process. I think we could say that, you know, within normal vetting process.
We've done it before with like new hires at the start of the school year, I think is when it was, because the meeting, the way the meeting felt.
Yeah, sporadically, yeah. Okay, so assuming the vetting process, subsequent. I'm about to read the new motion and it's going to be the motion. You ready?
Oh.
Here it goes. During the school year 2021, assuming the normal vetting process and to be approved by the board subsequently, find and fill positions required to respond to vacancies brought about by COVID-19.
Still moved.
We have that motion. Is there a second? Do you want a second, Larry? Second?
Second.
A second for Mr. Grove. I actually made the motion since I spoke it into existence. So, we have a motion. Second, is there any other comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? So, we're good. I'll, I'll bring that to you.
Hopefully, we won't need it.
New business. Is there any new business to see? When is our next meeting? I forgot to look. I've got a calendar handy. Hold on, I did. It's in September, yes. It's just good to see it. September 8th. That's the day after, that's the day after Labor Day. This next meeting is September 8th. We're going to be back in this room, right? Still in this room?
Yeah.
As far as we know.
Here?
If we're taking all the precautions for kids, we ought to keep them here.
Yes. We keep it, well, we'll keep it here. 6:30 at the elementary school, September the 8th is our next meeting. At this point, we entertain a motion going to closed session.
So moved.
Do you have the text? And we're going to be in closed session for how long, Dr. Grimsley?
15 minutes.
15 minutes. And then, we'll return and, and certify and, and vote on whatever we had in closed session and let you know what that was, then we'll.
I move that the board convene in closed session for the following purposes. To discuss and consider the appointment of staff for professional positions, classified positions, and discussion of superintendent goals pursuant to Code, Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
A motion, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Rubin. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, and so ordered. So, we'll, we're going to go to the little room? Yeah, okay. So, we're going to recess to the little room. You can hang out here if you want. And we'll be back. And if we don't see you, good night. Thanks. All right. Did we lose her?
Rest. She's coming.
Okay. Okay, we've just come out of closed session. And at this time, we will certify that only things related to the motion were discussed during closed session.
Dr. Rubin certifies.
Rachel Bynum certifies.
Wesley Mills certifies.
Lucian Myers certifies.
Eric Grove certifies.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report?
So moved.
A motion from, is that Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rubin. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, no? So ordered. Do you want to make comments, please?
Sure. So, the personnel report included a substitute slate that we were able to actually get some additional substitutes on our list, which is wonderful. We have two teachers who are returning as subs to help us even though during quarter four, they had to, they decided to resign their positions as full-time teachers, but they're coming back on, Ms. Stephanie Beard and Carmen Ailer. And I can tell you, I had a child in their grade level last year and their remote learning strategies and online content was superb. They did a great job with engagement, so very happy to have them back. And we officially just hired our wellness program grant coordinator. And that person is Mrs. Susan Stoltzman, who is a pediatric nurse practitioner that lives in Washington. And she is just thrilled to help us out. She has experience, she has over 30 years' experience as a clinician and also has experience setting up school-based wellness centers in Dallas for underserved Hispanic populations, as well as serving other populations in Syracuse, New York. And also was a practitioner at Piedmont Pediatrics for many, many years. So, we're thrilled to have her on board.
Thank you very much. And so, we are at a point, we're ready to adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Wait, a motion, Mr. Rubin?
Second.
Did you second?
I couldn't tell if he said second.
I don't know, what do you say? Second for Ms. Bynum. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no? The meeting's adjourned. Thank you all for coming.